Good morning.
Good morning.
It's great to see each and every one of you. And at this time, we'll turn it over to our city club.
This is the pre-meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, May 18th. And we have approval of minutes from May 11th.
Good job.
We have appeals requests for wave of the noise ordinance in Cooper Riverside Park on July the 30th from 9:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. on Page Avenue on May 21st and 22nd from 4:00 to 10:00. Langin Park on June the 6th from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. East Barkley Drive on May 22nd from 4:00 until 10:00.
No problem.
Public hearing today is a public hearing to rezone property located at 2100 North University Boulevard, east side of North University Boulevard, at the east terminus of Mickey Drive and the east terminus of LeBaron Drive South from R1 to B1. Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Jamaica Carter regarding shootings and unrest of young men age 18 to 25, and she wants to talk about some things to do to help with that. Reverend Tony Allgood regarding the Faith in Action Committee. Pastor Buford Hall regarding Faith in Action Committee. Ordinance is held over 01024, ordinance to amend sections 1-31 and 1-32 of the Mobile City Code to incorporate and allow for enforcement of Chapter 57, right-of-way construction and administration. CIP resolutions held over 08340, approve purchase order to game time for Crawford Murphy Park playground equipment and installation. 08341, approve purchase order to Carrier Corporation for Chiller at the Mobile Civic Center. Resolutions held over 40196 and 197 are declaring structures at 1169 El Mara Street and 1212 Seneca Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. 21331, authorize contract with Gorm Air Conditioning.
Madam President.
Mr. Vice President.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Vice President, David Dokkenbaum, Municipal Enforcement. I have additional information with the two items on resolutions held over 1169 El Mara Street and then also the 1212 Seneca. Can you recommend that we table both of these personally? I did want to express thank you to the property owners. The property has 1169 El Mara Street, they have received a permit to secure the structure and have announced that now they're securing the area with a signature of the property to complete renovation of the structure. The property at 1212 Seneca Street, the property owner decided to demolish the property and make a new construction. So again, I just recommend that we table both of these personally.
That's a good outcome. Good.
Absolutely. As relates to the property there at El Mara, I did get an email probably similar to the one you got, Mr. Dokkenbaum, so that was going to be my recommendation. They're moving steadily toward saving the structure. If that can happen, we're certainly in favor of. Did you recommend a time period?
No, not at this point. I don't have a timeframe, but they did have a strategic purpose for me, I had a chance to speak to that today on our staff meeting. And any further follow-up, Municipal Enforcement will follow up and go directly to the property. So I think at this point it would be appropriate since we do have permits and we have action at this location and table the nuisance mitigation action.
Yes.
21331, authorize contract with Gorm Air Conditioning for Mobile Sanger Theater mechanical upgrades.
Do we have an update on? Thank you.
Good morning.
Sent that information out to you all yesterday. Our last report is that the contractor has committed to one. The other is waiting final approval from consultant engineer for parts that they are planning to use. So he has successfully made a good progress.
So you recommend to move forward? Okay. I don't think your memo attached, at least in my email, and it might be my service, but if you could resend, but thank you. That's good.
Yeah, I got it. Yeah, I got it.
08342, approve purchase order to Toder for garbage carts and lids. 08343, approve item base bid with McGrith Tire Company for after-hours tire services. 08344, approve purchase order for expansion module cyber hardware. 08345, approve purchase order to CDW Government LLC for 10 cameras for the police department. 31346, authorize grant application for the fiscal 2021 Port Security Grant Program. 31347, adopt the 2021 Alabama Division of Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. 31348, authorize a grant application to the Alabama Historical Commission for the CLG Grant Program. Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, 64025, ordinance to rezone property located at 2100 North University Boulevard. 64026, ordinance to amend and restate Chapter 64 of the City Code zoning.
Can we discuss how we're going to handle that?
Ms. Rich?
Yeah, that's my question.
I'm sorry, could you restate the question?
This is the UDC. 64026.
Yes, ma'am. It's my intention to assign this particular item to the entire council by way of a committee of the whole. This is such a monumental and transformational item that I've been encouraged by several members of this council that all of us be present, all of us have the same level of access both to question and answer, and so that we can deliberate, have whatever public hearings might need to be necessary, and move as expeditiously as possible with this particular item. So I'll have that ready for 10:30.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
01027, ordinance redefining voting districts. And I ask that we take this one today.
Yep.
Okay.
Consent resolutions being introduced, 6349, approve award a special bonus to the Office of the Month for March and April 2021 as part of the mayor's incentive program. 60350, determine and 351, 352, 353, 354 are determining appropriations to Tomerville Crichton Community Development Corporation, to the Gulf Coast Challenge, to the Universal Youth Foundation, Three Mile Creek Partnership, serve public purposes and authorizing payment. 37355, recommend.
Madam City Club, let me ask you, would it be an issue for me to be added to 6352 relative to that contribution to the Gulf Coast Challenge? I have the letter. Oh, I can just wait till next week. Whichever one is less.
It would be easier to wait till next week.
That's fine.
Okay. All right. 37355, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor Class II license for Liquor Bank on Airport Boulevard. 37356, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine off premises only license for Azalea Seafood Specialty Shop on Range Line Road. CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time, 21357, authorize contract with Williams Power and Signal for construction of traffic signal and ITS upgrades along Government Street.
Is this a closed-loop system? Is this what we did on Airport Boulevard?
Yes, yes.
It's a, you know, I'd just like to say, I'm happy to see this. When I was first approached, or it was six or seven years ago, about spending $750,000 out there on Airport Boulevard between Sage and McGregor, I was skeptical. You know, a lot of times, this technology promises more than it delivers, but this has really worked out well. This has worked out very well. And so I think, I think the technology has proved itself effective, and I'm happy to see it on the agenda.
The other piece, just a note, it'll be, it's all going to be fiber optic cable. It'll also be linked back into Alabama Power, or excuse me, ALDOT's kind of command node. And so when there's traffic and problems at the tunnel, they, when it, traffic naturally shifts over to there, they can then manually control it from there, from their system. So it's all, it'll be integrated. So they'll have visibility to be able to monitor and adjust it as necessary in real time.
So this is from the bankhead tunnel? How far west?
All the way to, I think, I think it is broad. I think it's just broad. I was going to see if it was further than that, but I know it's at least a broad. So, but that, as you know, is the most problematic area.
And that's because it will link to ALDOT because 90 is an ALDOT program. I mean, it's a, it's a posted roadway.
That's a roadway, yeah.
Also, this is funding coming from the MPO, too. Isn't it a match? It's not the full 1.1 million, correct?
In terms of pricing, I'm sorry, the.
Some of this is ALDOT funding. I think there were grants that were given, because I know that there are some grants that were given, even though it's not an ALDOT for airport and for.
That's correct.
It's different once the act is.
Oh.
It is a state.
That's nice.
I actually see that. And when it's all fraud to conception.
Fraud to conception, which is right at the entrance to the tunnel then, like you said. Yeah.
Madam President.
Mr. Richardson.
I just want to say something about traffic lights in general. If I'm on 43, if. If, Madam President, if I'm traveling US Highway 43, and if I travel through Saraland, Satsuma, all the way up to I-65.
Mr. Richardson.
Yes.
Get the mic a little closer to you.
Okay. If I'm traveling US Highway 43.
Yes, sir.
And when I get to Saraland and Satsuma, if there is no traffic on the side streets, those traffic lights remain, remain on green. But if a vehicle pull up on a side street, it'll immediately change and allow them to go, and it'll go back to green. It'll stay green for a half hour if no traffic is coming on the side streets. In Mobile, it could be 3 o'clock in the morning, you're going to sit there and wait. There's no traffic, and you don't own a car out there. And you sit there and wait, but you go up the country, up to Satsuma, those are modern traffic lights, there's nobody waiting up there. Traffic light going to change only if someone comes off a side street. I want to know why we can't get the same technology in the city of Mobile. We've had, we've had people stopping at a traffic light in the wee hours in the morning, and people jump out and shoot them in the face and rob them, when there's nobody out there. They should have been able to go right on to where they're going. Not in Mobile, uh-uh. You're going to stop and pay your dues, and then you leave. I'm trying to say, you know, do they have, what do they have we don't have? What's happening?
We have that technology here. There are some areas that either the system has either been damaged and broken and needs to be repaired, which isn't, we are aware of those areas. And there's either loops in the ground, or there's cameras that sense that. And in cases, I think, as a matter of fact, on the agenda, I think you see some cameras on here today to do just that, to replace them that were damaged or broken. So every time there's an accident, someone hits a pole, hits a box, it breaks any of that system, it has to be repaired. We don't necessarily repair it immediately. Sometimes we repair it once, when we go in to do a repaving in that area as well. So it's done it multiple times, but those systems do exist in the city. We can get you the number of systems that exist like that, if you'd like.
Speaking for the citizens in District 1, they don't care about $16 million in surplus if you've got lights not functioning. They want you to go get some of that money and fix it in District 1. I'm through, Mr. President.
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Richardson.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 01358, authorize interagency agreement with State of Alabama Department of Human Resources for summer youth employment. 08359, approved item.
Madam President, could we give some more information on that?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is a reimbursement from the State of Alabama Department of Human Resources. So because of COVID last year, many students around the state were not able to participate in some of their summer programs. So what they allowed us to do is extend our summer program into the fall to do summer or fall internships for juniors and seniors who are in college to help with our workforce development and get them to move and work in the city of Mobile.
So would there be any particular hours when schools start in the fall that the students will work? I mean, is it like the, it gets called JT? Who's that?
It used to be JTPA.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is more remote work for college students. They were working from home. Many of the college students were not able to go back on campus last year. And so this year, they will be able, those who are working, living at home, excuse me, will still have that hybrid option to work in the city of Mobile.
Okay. All right, thank you.
08359, approve item base bid for inverter generators. 08360, approve purchase order to Gray Bar Electric for roadway luminaries, $26,783.73. 08361, approve purchase order to environmental products group for two grapple trucks for trash collection, $336,958.94. 08362, approve purchase order to Ingram Equipment for grapple truck for trash collection, $154,709.32. 08363, approve purchase order to environmental products for two knuckle boom cab chassis loader trucks, $168,479.47.
Madam President.
I have some questions on that.
Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, could we see, could we be told the difference between 361 and 362?
Sure. They're just different vendors, same, effectively the same types of system. One's a 28 cubic yard truck, one's a 24 cubic yard truck. These, what I was going to ask is on 361, 362, 363, as well as 367, if we can get, and 366, if all five of those can be consent on those to expedite the procurement of those pieces of equipment. Three of those are readily available now. They will immediately make an impact on our ability to pick up trash. The others is, puts, gets those in order, on order now, so that we can get the trucks delivered quicker, which are the normal systems that we use. So in those five items, we'd ask that you pass those today.
So that's the reason why we're using different vendors? Because these vendors currently have these trucks in place, and we just go ahead and tackle it?
That's right.
So what's the price difference? I mean, is there a bit difference in price in the trucks in, between the two vendors or what?
No, they're basically about $1,000 difference, or actually, less than $1,000 difference between the price. And they're 153, 154,000 each. There are less than $1,000 difference in the two vendors. It's just the availability of the equipment.
And there's the going rate for this type of trucks?
Yes.
And so you asking the council to consent 361, 362, 363?
363, and then on the next page, 366 and 367.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
We've heard Ms. Rich.
Thank you.
And then we'll come back to you, Ms. Rich.
So these would not be on back order?
Three of those, 361, 362, and 367 are immediate availability, and those will be used, put into operation as soon as we get them. I mean, we would probably, I think, I don't know.
Okay.
The team's here, but they'll be here this week or next week. The other ones are putting us in the queue to order those regular body trucks that we need, like the ones we've had on order since June of last year.
Yeah, that was my question. Okay. We kept hearing about the ones that are on back order that were already purchased. What, so how many altogether will there be? And do any of the old ones just need parts to be fixed? Or are you looking at a completely new fleet?
It's not a complete new fleet. We're just starting to phase out the old ones. Five of them are not repairable at this point. They've run their useful life. And so those will be sold or scrapped once we get these new six in. So this is just a continuation of the phased, you know, rebuilding of that fleet over time. We can't do it all at once, so we're doing them in increments. We did those last six last year, as you recall. This will get on order, an additional three assets to the six, and then those other three you see on there are just immediate backfills right now that we can get right now to get after the.
And what's the total number to be here in town to keep trash being picked up on schedule? What number of?
16 trucks. That's the ones with the knuckle booms is for trash is what we have in the fleet. There's also the haulers, and then there's also trailers, so it's.
Right, the one you combine stuff, you mean?
That's right.
Yeah.
So this will be, you'll have, when we get the six in, plus the three where you're going to hopefully prove today, that'd be nine of the 16 would eventually be new, and then five of which are already parked. So that's just really a net increase of four, you know, not total increase, but net new fleet of four. Does that make sense?
And when these come into town, the ones that are ready to come into town, how does that resolve the problem of scheduling for trash pickup?
It just helps get us back and get out there quicker, get more picked up off the ground quicker. Until we get the other six that are doing by the end of this month, that'll get us fully back in operation. So it'll still take us probably a couple of weeks to get us back onto regular schedule. Once they get here, it won't happen overnight.
That's probably an important piece of information people have to understand.
And we're sharing that. We give daily updates on the status and where we're at, and then we'll also give, once we get the equipment in.
I sort of read the last one that we were up to date. Maybe I misunderstood the way it was worded, but it said that they had done the Monday routes, and it appeared that they were back on schedule, but that's not the case.
No, no.
I must have read it wrong. I'm not saying that I didn't misinterpret, but, you know, we're looking at a couple more weeks of people having their trash out, but not necessarily picked up on their normal schedule.
Correct.
Okay. Are you trying to let people know when they should put it out and they'll get it? Or you just want them to put it out and then know that it might be delayed?
We tell them the day before the area we're going to be in, so that it's not sitting out there for a week. So if they just continue to look at either our website or our social media, they'll know which area we're going to be in the next day. Typically, we're in that zone for several days to get it cleaned up. That's just, that's normal. And so, so we tell them the day before, so they know they can put it out. And we realize that there's a lot out there already that's going to be out there regardless.
So really, the word is until all of the vehicles are on the ground and moving with the personnel, or there's going to be delays. And you, your assumption is that that's through June, perhaps?
Into June.
Into June.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Rich?
That pretty much answered my questions, too. I was wondering about whether these trucks were the ones that were still on backlog, back order, or what the status was, but that was my question as well.
08364, approve purchase order to Donahue Chevrolet for Chevrolet Tahoe, $35,818. 08365, approve purchase order to Southern Light and Traffic Systems for four traffic video detection systems, $34,240.
Can we get some details on that?
Traffic video.
The video detection systems?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. We talked about it.
Yeah.
Right. But where's this, is this going in with the Government Street?
No, this is, oh, this is, hey, these are to replace ones that were damaged or broken.
Oh, on 43?
No, 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 just in the city.
Okay.
In the city. This is four of the systems.
Where are these going? Do we know?
I believe they're going, I need to check with Jennifer White. I believe they're actually.
We didn't.
There's a, the intersection by Lowe's up in the Tillman's Corner area, I think, is where, I believe that's where they're at, where they had some damaged ones there, and they're there to replace those.
On Schillinger's, then?
I believe so, but I need to confirm with her.
We could get that, just out of curiosity.
Yeah. But this gets to what Councilman Richardson was saying, that the city doesn't have any. We have them throughout the city. They occasionally get damaged. We occasionally have to buy new ones or replace the loops that are in the ground.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
How many cameras? It's $34,240, and that would get us, how many systems?
That's four replacement cameras for $34,000.
So this is for four locations?
Four separate cameras, not four locations, four separate cameras. I don't know how many, exactly how many locations. I thought it was all for one location, but I need to confirm with Ms. White.
Because it could be in four directions.
But, but again, this is not super expensive.
These cameras.
We can, if we just back off on buying vehicles, for a month, we can probably get all the cameras.
This is, this is.
It's all public safety. It's all public safety. It's all, it has to do with safety. This is not, all right, this is not elaborate for what I see here for the price. I think we ought to be moving on correcting these systems, especially on high-volume streets. I think we ought to be vigilant in trying to install these systems on all high-volume streets. Thank you, Ms. Rich.
21368, authorized contract renewal with Protech Video for technical, technology, and consulting services, $37,000.
Mr. President. Did we skip over 367?
Oh, I did, only because we had already talked about taking those up. Sorry.
All right. I do have a question about that one, too. It said for one used grapple truck, and it's, what, 153? I mean, had this was like being on like a showcase or something, if that's why it's used and.
Actually, that, I think, that wound up getting all three new ones. One became available, so it should not, should not be listed as used. It's three, the three that we're getting are new.
Oh, so that need to be changed, too?
That's why the price is basically the same.
Okay.
Originally, they were going to get a used one, and then they decided, they found another one that was new that we could get.
Okay, so we need to change that on our agenda, correct?
Oh, yeah, because it looks like we're paying the same price for a used one as we are for a new one.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
21369, authorized contract with Seacore Enterprises for DIP and Cypress Shores, ditch moing, $212,000. 21370, authorized contract with McCrory and Williams for construction, engineering, and inspection for Three Mile Creek Watershed Restoration Project, $420,000.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
I'm happy to see this, obviously, since it impacts a part of my district, but I just wondered if maybe we can have Jen or whomever share a little bit of information about what this actually means and what we're doing.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So this is the construction inspection contract, and this is going to be both for the Three Mile Creek stabilization, stream stabilization project, and the lake and park dredging. So we are able to combine both, put both into one contract. This is funded through. This is funded through a restoration grant that went through last year, and we're working on getting the contracts in place, and this is the first one.
And, and this is also on East Drive, correct?
Correct, so that's the entire 12-mile stabilization project.
So you take it out to the concrete part of, of 12-mile?
So the concrete's going to be restabilized, we're also protecting those sanitary sewer overflows that are inside 100-mile cree, so we should see a lot of reduced sedimentation in that area. It's going to provide a lot of relief to Langen Park to reduce the situation.
Where's the laydown area? Because I was contacted by an engineer to just ask me some questions about the laydown for this.
For the construction?
Yeah.
We have not gotten to that yet, but I would like to know where that's going to be when we get to-
Because he had talked about Long Street. You know what I'm talking about? You're probably familiar with it.
Yeah.
And that could be a big cluster there.
Yeah, we don't have a location for that yet, and when we get to the construction bid, and we know the details, I'll be able to share that with you.
Okay.
This is the first contract that's-
Great.
-we've been able to put through, so-
Good job.
We've got some real estate things we're working through, but you will see the construction contract for 12-mile coming up hopefully shortly when we get through those real estate issues.
Great, thank you.
Hold on, Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
Okay, so would you say that when this project is finished, that the fish down on Three Mile Creek in District 1, near Tricentennial Park, would be more healthier, safer to eat? Because whatever's bad up there is coming to us, because it's running all down here, it's all running down here. If it's bad up there, it's bad on us. So would you say, when, when all of that is cleaned up and all, it's going to help with the fish down at the foot of the hill?
So this project aims to reduce sedimentation, so there's a lot of excess sediment coming down the river. It's part of the reason why Langen, Langen fills up with sediment. So this is addressing that, and it will address the sediment that goes down into Three Mile Creek and into 100-mile creek.
But I'm glad to hear that. Jen, clean, clean, clean your district up, Jen.
Well, we're trying. You have to start uphill before you can get downhill, so that, that's why it's, it takes so long and it's so difficult, because you've got to start up the hill before anything can happen down the hill. But I know everybody will be happy to know that we are getting started with this, because of course, we keep hearing, you know, for years, when are you going to do something about the lake at Langen Park? So this is a great first step, and I'm just excited that we're getting started. Thank you, Jen.
I can assure you that we're working really hard getting these contracts going. These restoration projects are challenging difficult for us, and we're working really hard with our staff to get them going as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. President, I would like to go ahead and say that Mobile has one freestanding lake. That's the lake in Tricentennial Park, self-feeding. It's, it's not connected to no creek, no other body water, it produces its own water. We have the only freestanding lake in city of Mobile. Just want to let you know.
Twenty-five, three, seven, one, accept a permanent and temporary construction easement from Edith Peatney for 2019 CIP Drainage Group F Project Driver Street. Thirty-one, three, seven, two, authorize the covenant of purpose, use, and ownership with the US Department of Treasury in support of grant for innovating St. Louis Street. Thirty-one, three, seven, three, authorize acceptance of a Gulf of Mexico Energy and Security Act program grant in support of Gulf Quest National Maritime Museum, $76,800, no match.
Can we get some details on that? Thank you.
Yeah, Council, this is a, this is a resubmission of a 2019 grant to improve technology at Gulf Quest for some remote learning, you know, things like that, that have been really relevant over the last year, as well as developing some environmental curriculum to address some of the, the gaps in the, in the exhibits at Gulf Quest. So currently, we don't have a whole lot of environmental education at Gulf Quest. This is in part to address that.
Call for public hearings, forty-one, three, seven, four, call for public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Gregory Sargent doing business at Southern Transportation to operate a sedan service scheduled June 1st. Forty-one, three, seven, five, call for public hearing to consider approval for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Siobhan Robinson doing business at CNS Transit Express to operate a sedan service scheduled June 1st.
Any announcements from members of the council? Any announcements from the administration? All righty, if not, we will see each other at 10:30. Thank you.